Open our meeting here, ladies and gentlemen, and before I forget, I just want to advise everybody, we are being recorded. And it will be on the YouTube. If you are interested in looking at it, you can go on to the town website and then click on Channel 18. And then when you go down through the Channel 18 screen, you'll see, I believe it says, Channel 18 YouTube videos. And you'll click on that, and you'll be able to see this hearing, and indeed, all of the town hearings. They're all getting video recorded now and are being put on YouTube. So if you ever have any interest in any of the hearings and you're unable to attend, you can go and look at them on YouTube. Okay, so, welcome to the zoning board of appeals public hearing for Wednesday, September 27, 2017. We've opened at 7:00 PM here in the Griffin meeting room, Horwich Town Hall. Tonight, we're going to hear about four cases on our agenda. Members of the public will be invited to provide information and comments as they deem fit at the appropriate time. And I guess that's it. We will open by having our members introduce themselves, please.
James Hilliard.
Kathleen Muller.
Dean Hedderstedt.
Dave Ryer.
Al Donahue.
And Shayla Delaney, board secretary.
Okay, just for the benefit, really, of Attorney Kroll, who comes before as frequently, Mr. Hilliard is now a regular member of the board. So, the regular members now are Mr. Hilliard, Kathy, who's it?
Kathleen Muller.
Muller, Kathy Muller, sorry. Senior moment, senior moment, sorry.
What's my line?
Mr. Hedderstedt, Dave Ryer, and John Burke, who's not here. Mr. Donahue, Al Donahue, is our alternate member, but he will be sitting on the cases and voting tonight. Okay, case 2017-19, Clifford A. DeLuce, John Z. DeLuce, and Margaret Wiegand. I'm not going to read the whole thing because they have requested, well, actually, they haven't requested.
They've consented to.
They've consented, yes, thank you. We could not get four members present that heard the first part of this case. It's a continued case, so we need to continue it until October 25, 2017. So I'd like a motion.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So we will continue it until 10:25 17. After we hear the other cases, I want to come back and talk about our scheduling on that case. Okay, case 2017-27, Joseph G. DiStefano and Sarah DiStefano, through their agent, Attorney William Kroll, have applied for a special permit or, in the alternative of variance, to demolish and replace a single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Horwich, Section 32554A and Table 2, Area Regulations, as set forth in MGL Chapter 40A, Sections 6 and 10. The property is located at 36 Northern Avenue, Map 6, Parcel E. 5-13-2, in the RH1 zoning district. Attorney Kroll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I figured this is the new microphone.
You can hear you very well, so.
Thank you.
I didn't notice it, okay.
I noticed it wasn't there.
Okay.
And Ms. Muller has schooled us in the past that it's Muller like Kruller, so that's how I remember it, right?
Oh, so Duller.
I'll go with Kruller.
So I couldn't remember it anyway, sorry.
Or now we could say, like the former Attorney General who's leading the investigation, Robert Duller, but he spells it wrong.
We'll remember it. I'll try to remember. I'm requesting a continuance on behalf of the petitioners, Joseph and Sarah DiStefano, on this matter. The Butters at 29 Windermere Bluff filed an objection, and I heard from their lawyer, Attorney David Keenan, yesterday, we talked, and he was planning on being here tonight. We talked mid-afternoon, and he was having a health emergency. So I agreed to continue the case to the next hearing, which I think is October 25.
Yes.
And my clients have agreed, and he agreed.
I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
May I, Mr. Chairman, I just have a question. On the plan, this is a corner lot, is that right, on Windermere and Northern?
Yes.
Which requires setback from both streets, which is a front yard setback?
Yes.
I think the plan is not, does not set up that way.
Yeah, I understand.
If you could submit a substituted plan, that would be
Okay.
helpful for us, thank you.
Not a problem. It has two front setbacks.
Two front setbacks, and no rear yard, actually, under that scenario. Well, everything's side.
Okay, Mr. Hilliard, thank you.
Motion for Mr. Hilliard, could I have a second, please? I'm sorry, for Mr. Hedderstedt.
Can I second?
Okay, Mr. Hilliard, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, continuance is granted on case 2017-27 to 10:25 17.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Case 2017-28, Clifford E. Rober, through his agent, Attorney William Kroll, has applied for a special permit or, in the alternative of variance, to demolish and replace a single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Horwich, Section 32554A and Table 2, Area Regulations, as set forth in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6 and Section 10. The property is located at 14 Hudson Lane, Map 4, Parcel J. 1-8, in the RH1 zoning district. Attorney Kroll, if you could introduce yourself for the record and your attendees there, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Kroll from Howardport, I'm representing Clifford and Lisa Rober this evening, who are seated here with me. Clifford is the sole owner of the property, but Lisa wanted to monitor the proceedings this evening, I'm sure, so.
I'm not getting near that one.
As you can see from the assessors map that I submitted, the property is on the north side of Lower County Road at 14 Hudson Lane. The petitioner, who also happens to be a land surveyor, professional land surveyor, has submitted the certified plot plan, and that plot plan shows you, with the dotted lines, the existing single-family residential dwelling, and then with the bold lines, the proposed dwelling and the proposed driveway. I had Mr. Rober submit a grid here that you have a copy of with the requested information. And in my narrative, I indicated that the proposed porch will be 25 feet from Hudson Lane to meet the setback there from a road, and the southerly sideline will be more than 20 feet, it'll be 23 feet from the southerly sideline, as shown on the plan. The northerly setback for the existing house was 14.9, as he indicates on his grid, and now it will increase, meaning that he's going further back from the lot line. So the proposed house will be now more conforming at 17 feet, but not the 20 feet that's required currently. The rear setback is, will be 39.8 feet, and the property will still be compliant with site coverage and building coverage requirements significantly less. The building coverage will be 17.8 percent, where the maximum's 30 percent. Site coverage, 23.8 percent maximum, is 35 percent, so well within those parameters. Since the existing dwelling is non-conforming on the northerly side, and since he's increasing the building height and the habitable floor area, his position is that he is intensifying an existing nonconformity in accordance with the Gale case, which, as you know, dictates a special permit, as opposed to a variance in that type of situation. So our argument is that, and the building inspector in his denial letter, so-called, indicates that the property does not conform with the required, current required property line setback, so it's nonconforming. So it's a special permit case, and our argument is that the proposed dwelling will not substantially increase noise, odors, fumes, congestion, traffic, or the like, and will not constitute a substantial detriment to the neighborhood. It's a single-family residence now, and it will remain a single-family residence when they complete the demolition and replacement. And we'd ask that you grant the special permit this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Hilliard?
I have no questions.
Ms. Muller?
Yes, maybe you can school me in your write-up, Attorney Kroll. I see you identified this as demolish and replace, but when you cited the Gale case, you talked about that applying to the expansion of a single-family dwelling.
Okay.
How does something that covers an expansion apply to demolish and replace?
Good point. The Gale case does apply to demolish and replace. It was a demolish and replace in the Gale case. So, I was mimicking some language there, but the Gale case applies to demolition, alteration, or expansion of a single or two-family residential dwelling.
Okay, that I didn't realize, but going through it as a new dwelling, I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for the mix-up, or the confusion.
Mr. Hedderstedt? Help me with the proposed plot plan. On the left-hand, bottom-left-hand side, it lists proposed height, and it says proposed peak, 36.5. What is that?
We put that there just for you and Mr. Ryer.
I had the same question.
So that you would ask that question, and I'm prepared. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the height, as you know, is determined from average grade. If you look at that plan, it says the average grade is 12.9, right?
I got it.
Okay, now, it says the proposed peak is 36.5. That's from the bottom of the foundation?
No, that's an elevation.
And, that's an elevation, but if you take that 36.5 and subtract the average grade, 12.9, you come out with the proposed height, which is 23.6. So, the proposed peak doesn't need to be there. The height of that building from the average grade will be 23.6.
Yeah, very misleading when you put that in there.
Right.
Thank you for clarifying.
We didn't do that on purpose, but.
You wanted to get my attention, you did.
Okay, good. Because I ran a tape, I had it all, the calculation already.
Thank you so much, I have no further questions.
The existing 14.9, I guess, is from the existing porch?
To the north, yes. It doesn't call it out on the plan, but it's closer than 17.
I'm assuming it's from the porch there, okay. I have no further questions. Mr. Donahue?
The only question I have with regard to the proposed driveway. If it moves closer to the property line.
To be moved where?
Looks as though it's been moved towards garage.
There's a, it's connected to the proposed house where the garage will be, on that north side. But if your question is, why is it so close to the property line, a driveway can be right up to the property line. It's not a structure.
Thank you.
Yep. Have no further questions. Does anyone in the public have anything they would like to say, either in favor or in opposition to this petition? No? Attorney Kroll, anything further?
I do not, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So move.
Second.
Okay, I think Mr. Donahue was first. I'll entertain a motion on the case, please.
Mr. Chairman, the board hereby grants, under case 2017-28, Clifford Rober.
Yes.
A special permit to demolish and replace a single-family dwelling pursuant to the code of Horwich 325-54A and Table 2, Area Regulation, Chapter 40A, Section 6. The property is located at 14 Hudson Lane, Map 4, Parcel H. 8, in the RH1 zoning district, all in accordance with the proposed plot plan by Rober, survey dated 5/26/2017, and oh, yeah, drawings A. 1 through and including. I think it's A. 5?
A. 6.
A. 6?
Yes.
By Robert, I guess it's the same individual?
It should be Peter DeMayo.
I think it's Peter DeMayo there.
DeMayo, right, dated, if I can read the, can't read the date.
Neither could I, so I didn't put it in there.
Why don't you just say submitted with the application?
Submitted with the application in front of the board in today's date. And.
We need our condition.
Oh, and that such effort will occur for the demolish, major construction or destruction work can only be accomplished during a period, what is it, the end of?
June 15?
I think we did, last month, we did June 30.
June 30? Through Labor Day.
Through Labor Day of 2017 and/or 2018.
That would be the period during which?
The work cannot be, the work cannot be done, the external work.
Right, and no new landscaping.
Where you would cause a traffic problem.
And no new landscaping.
And that this case has been, it's approved based upon the Gale case, and in that, there is no increase in the, this is called a, trying to think of the word.
Increasing nonconformity?
A non, no increase in the nonconformity.
But there is, there is. That's what the Gale case is.
Yeah.
No new nonconformity.
We're not creating a new nonconformity.
You're not creating a new nonconformity, is what I meant to say, not a new nonconformity. And that it would not increase the traffic or any other problems currently existing in the area, or in the general property area, or.
Okay, June 30. We're doing it now, so it's.
Community in that area. That's it.
Could you add, no new landscaping during that period? No new landscaping during that period?
Oh, I didn't, yeah, there's no new landscaping during that period either.
The Ryer, the Ryer condition.
Right, the Ryer condition.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Could I have a second, please?
Second?
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, granted unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Rober, would you like these back?
Sure. If you don't want them, I'll be happy.
Nice to meet you, too.
Yes. Oh, wait, I need mine back, I gotta stamp them, I'm sorry.
So, half the world's driven down the driveway for the last few days.
Thank you, Sheila. That's, yeah, that's just garbage, that one.
One piece of correspondence on that, which you will receive to conduct your conference.
Thank you. Okay, case 2017-29, Keith A. Golenberg and Sandra J. Golenberg, through their agent, Attorney William Kroll, have applied for a special permit or, in the alternative of variance, to construct an addition, including a new garage, and convert the existing garage into habitable space. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Horwich, Section 32554A and Table 2, Area Regulations, as set forth in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6 and Section 10. The property is located at 317 Lower County Road, Map 12, Parcel Y. 2-5, in the RH zoning district. And we have one piece of correspondence. Okay, it's from the conservation department with a note, requires additional permits or Case 2017-29 needs Conservation Commission approval, as property is located in a flood zone.
We filed that last week, for Conservation Commission.
Okay, Attorney Kroll, if you could introduce yourself for the record, please, and your two attendees.
Thank you. Attorney William Kroll from Howardport, again, representing Keith and Sandra Golenberg. Sandy is located to my right, in the blue, and then I have Kathy DeMeyer here, next to me, from Encore Construction. I worked with Dale Nicola in Dennisport. This property is located, as Ms. Muller noted, on, south of the Lower County Road this time, near to Allen's Harbor, and it's shown on the assessors map, it's a large lot, very elongated, goes from Lower County down to Allen's Harbor, as you can see. And on the plot plan, and this may set a record, because if you look at the grid on the plot plan, the rear setback is 180 feet. I've never had one that's 180 feet, and the front setback is 175 feet. So I think we're in compliance with the front and rear setbacks. The southerly setback is, I'll skip that for a minute, we'll go to the northerly setback. The northeast corner of the existing garage, as you can see from the plan, is 19 feet from the lot line, so it's pre-existing nonconforming, it's supposed to be 20. So it's a Gale case situation again, and here, we're not demolishing the building, we're expanding, so that was the language I was mimicking, Ms. Muller. The proposed garage will be 9.8 feet from the northerly lot line, as shown on the plan. So we're intensifying that existing nonconformity. And I said 9.8, I was mistaken, I should have been reading from my narrative, which is 11.7. It will not be 9.8, it'll be 11.7. So it's going from 19 feet to 11.7 feet, as shown on the plan. In all other respects, this dwelling will be in conformity with setbacks, as I mentioned, front, rear, the southerly side's clearly more than, the deck is 19.6, that's what I was looking for, on the southerly side, and the existing dwelling is 22.5 on the southerly We're seeking a special permit, but just so I remember to mention it, we're also seeking, in the special permit, language that we can raise the existing dwelling, we're putting a foundation on the existing dwelling because it's in a floodplain zone, so we have to raise it approximately two feet. Jeff Larson, two or three building inspectors ago, had a policy that if you were raising it, I think, more than a foot, you needed Board of Appeals approval to do that. So I put that in there, just in case, I was told, we don't really need it, but I would like some language in there, just in case, I'd rather be safe than sorry, and not have to come back to the board for some, some kind of federal regulation that says you have to have local board approval, something like that. So I'd like to see that in the decision, if we can. Our argument is that, and the building inspector, again, said that we don't meet the, in his denial letter, we don't meet the current setback requirement, so we need to come to you for a special permit. Our argument is, similar to the prior petition, that there would be no substantial increase in traffic, noise, odors, fumes, congestion, or the like, as a result of this addition, and it would not constitute a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood, that would remain a single-family dwelling. The garage that we're replacing, so to speak, does already have a bedroom above it, so that the garage itself is going to be made into habitable space, and the proposed garage is the addition that we're seeking, and has habitable space above that garage. We would ask that you grant the special permit for those reasons this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Hilliard?
I have no comment.
Ms. Muller?
I have no questions.
Mr. Hedderstedt?
You are intensifying only existing nonconformity, is that correct?
We're intensifying the northerly setback nonconformity.
I have no other questions.
What is that 9.8 on the plan?
I think that's an elevation, Kathy, maybe you can?
It's 9.69, I think it's a.
It is an elevation.
Is that what they are? Because I see the little numbers everywhere.
Right.
Yeah, those are elevations.
Couldn't tell if that was, couldn't tell what it was, if it was the existing parking, like it.
And that shed is going away.
Seems to turn at that point, I don't know. Okay. The other question I had is, after you raise it, what are we talking, height-wise now?
The height on the plans, the elevation plan submitted, is 23 feet, seven eighths of an inch.
Okay, I had trouble reading that.
I used my magnifying glass before we came here.
So I thought I'd ask. I have no further questions. Mr. Donahue?
Is that after raising the house?
Yes.
Okay, that's after, Mr. Chairman, that's after raising the house, lifting the house.
I assumed it, yeah.
It'll be 23 feet, seven eighths of an inch, so clearly less than 30 feet.
Okay, I don't think we need our building restriction on this. I actually drove in today into the driveway, and it looks like you've got plenty of room in there to put vehicles, and otherwise, if you were up on Lower County, yeah, it would be an issue, because you can't park on Lower County, so, but I think you've got plenty of space back there. Okay, is there anyone in the public who would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this petition?
Here's your chance, Mr. Valentine.
Okay, hearing no one. Attorney Kroll, anything further?
No, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So move.
Second.
Second, Mr. Donahue, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody? Hearing is closed, I will entertain a motion in the case, please.
Case 2017-29, the board hereby approves and grants Keith Golenberg and Sandra Golenberg Case 2017-29, the Board hereby approves and grants Keith Golenberg and Sandra Golenberg a special permit to construct an addition, including a new garage, and convert an existing garage into a habitable space. The application is pursuant to the Code of Harwich, 32554A, Table 2, Area Regulation, as set forth in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6. The property is located at 17 Lower County Road, MAP 12, Parcel Y2-5, in the RH1 zoning district, in accordance with the Moren Engineering Plot Plan dated 9/15/2017, and the Encore Design slash Model, pages A1 through and including A, I guess it's A9, all dated...
I don't have my glasses on, can somebody help me with the date?
8/16/2017?
8/16/2017. With the following provisions, that the...
Oh, I took yours.
That the existing house will be raised by a, by two feet, and that this...
Could we say, excuse me, could we say approximately two feet? That's what the builder has told me.
Approximately two feet. I'll correct it, approximately two feet. And that this non-conformity, continuation of a non-conformity, is no new non-conformity is created, just an extension of the existing non-conformity for this particular location. There is no requirement here to shut down the roads, or anything else, or anything to do with outside construction, so we'll, that doesn't need to be addressed. And this is in accordance with the Gale case, and that it will not cause any harm, or disrespect, or changes, or any other current area or work going on, or conditions that exist in the community surrounding this location.
Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Hilliard, second. Any discussion by the Board?
I just have a question, did you want something in there with regard to the elevation on the foundation, or...
Mr. Hedersted said that he...
Approximately two feet.
The house would be raised approximately two feet. Thank you, yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Granted unanimously.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The bunk room looks like fun.
For when you resubmit the building.
Okay. Fantastic.
You know, you know the special words I'm trying to get at.
Oh, you bet.
Okay, as...
I'd have to have them all written out to be recanted, looking. I think you'd do a fine job on that.
As, you know, we went through this thing with the revised permit, how many times around till we finally got the language, and I'd like to recommend to the Board that we have our secretary reject any application that doesn't have Page 3 filled out in its entirety. I think, I find it a great help, I thought it really worked well to have it, yeah, it's great to have on the plan, but you know, most of the time, it's not likely, you've got to hunt around, so I'd like a motion that we instruct our secretary...
So moved.
To reject any application that doesn't have Page 3 filled out, or its substantial equivalent, like the separate grids, they were okay, because they had it in the exact format that we've asked for.
Right.
So we have the motion, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. So, Sheila, you are authorized just to reject them, you can tell them, we're just not going to hear those cases, they've got to do that.
I pretty much have been, and...
I know.
The only one...
Right, well, that's why I spoke to them before the meeting, not to, you know, embarrass them, but...
Grabbing people in advance, as they're filling them out.
We want it for a reason. Board, this is Larry Ballantyne, a member of our Board of Selectmen, he is our liaison. I don't know if everybody knows him or not, I knew him from pictures in the paper, but I had not met him until recently.
Well, and I like to show up as many as I can, because I find it embarrassing, and that way, my purpose is, is to, to help you, if you need, if I can provide some assistance from, you know, bring things, and also bring issues back to the Board that we should address overall. Right now, it seems, on the committees, that I'm liaison to, number one, the, as members.
Yeah, we need one more alternate, desperately.
Jack tells me I need to get on the mic. As a liaison, I, I'll try to attend as many meetings as I can. Purpose is to be here if I can bring messages back to the full Board, that will help you out, if I can help out myself, and, and kind of get, and also get the sense of what's going on, in terms of the town activity. I know Dave, you and I talked about Jim, trying to make sure you were moved over, and that worked out, you know, worked out well. I think the number one need that we have, seems like in our committees, is more volunteers, and I'm in a position now, that most of my neighbors, when they see me come, they run, because I'm after them to join the committees, but we do need to do that, because we couldn't survive without your committee help, so...
Right, we do need one more alternate, definitely.
Yeah, and I'm pressing on all those, so, as I'm sure you are.
Right.
But if you ever need, if there's something, you know, my email or call me, if I can help out in anything, just let me know, that's my purpose.
Do you know the time of the December 4th meeting? What time should I come?
I don't know the, our meetings will start at 6:30.
Okay.
I don't know the order of that yet.
No, that's okay, there was, on the announcement that I got, it just was the date, they didn't have a time, so 6:30, okay.
I'll clarify as we get closer.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
The meetings are, it'll be at 6:30, it'll be the initial part, but as I'm sure you're pointing out, is, you want to look and see how many consent items we have, and, you know, sometimes you drag on, you know, take a chance.
Okay, thanks, Larry, thanks for coming.
Kathy?
Now, from your experience, why is it that so many of the town committees are populated, or even overpopulated, with retirees who've moved here, and not...
Well, I think probably because we have a lot of retirees in town, this number is one of the big issues, but also, you know, all our committees take time.
Right.
It's a lot of work, and I'm not sure everyone recognizes that, and when they do figure it out, I think there's reluctance to take it on. The other thing, and I appreciate the way that you, you're operating, but in the past, we've had some occasions where Chairman, you know, it's easy to forget that we're working with our neighbors, and always show the proper respect when we talk to people, and make it a friendly atmosphere. That doesn't mean that you, you have to enforce the regulations, that's, that's the requirement, and you have to work on that. But sometimes that, that gets out, and as a board, we try to watch that fairly carefully, but it looks like a committee is going awry in that sense of being, making the enemies, we try to get that, so it's a, it's a, it's a good atmosphere. We want people to feel, feel welcome, and like you give the night, you know, you raise their point, you ask questions, and that's where you end and enforce the rules, but we have to be always careful on that, that's heard of some in the past, but I, I think it's, those are the three issues, that, you know, we have a lot of retirees in town. I find, I don't want to ramble, but I find Harwich, in terms of retirees, I find Harwich be particularly interesting, because we have so, so much expertise in town, almost any issue you want to bring in, we have somebody who's, has years of experience, and so there's a tendency also to try to get those folks in, to be on the, on the committees. I'm not sure I've answered your question, I probably...
I'm not sure there's a better answer.
But we'll, the final point is that, is though, that we're, we're always trying to get younger people to join, we always are, are working hard to get more women on the Board, I appreciate you're on the Board, but you're one of the, here, and that's, that's the issue we always are trying to work at. One final thought that we're, that we, we try to work at, and Dave, I don't know if you guys have had this discussion, but you need to always be looking at when you hold your meetings. You know, are there, are there better times, is it earlier, a little later, you know, more convenient, be sure you're polling people that they're comfortable with the time you're meeting, because you do have flexibility on that, to, you know, make it attractive. Anything else? I mean, I can talk, but I don't think you need that.
No, that's good, thanks, Larry.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you.
We need a motion on minutes?
Well, let me, before we go there, let's just talk about the DeLuce case. We've got a little issue here, because Dean's recused himself, and Jim wasn't here for the first hearing, so that basically Kathy, me, Al, and John. So normally, we would give Attorney Shealy the option to hear, have the case heard with four voting members, or go forward, yet again, to another meeting when we have five, which means then we're talking, pushing this thing back to November, and he wasn't happy to get a push back to October. But Jim, you, you really can't make it in October.
Did I say I couldn't, couldn't make it?
You said you were going to be in California, I think.
He sent an email.
October 25th, I'm going to be in California, sorry.
Okay, Joe?
Do it by phone.
That, that is a possibility.
Yeah, we could do that.
We, we have actually a phone...
I can do that.
Meeting connector.
It's so complex, I feel as if we need all the brains we can, looking at it.
Yeah, I'm not sure that this one is going to work by phone, without being able to look at it, and... This is going to be a complicated case. Now, the reason...
Both of the, the alternate, you know, the attorneys for both parties are prepared to be here together at the meeting on October 25th.
Yeah.
Is there an agreement?
No, that, not that I know of, I'm just saying, this is about the pit and the neighbors, the owner of the pit and the neighbors abutting, that's this whole, and they're both scheduled for that night.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if, is this going to be a contentious case, it's going to take longer than usual?
Yes, I anticipate it will.
I don't know if you've done it, but you could hold a special meeting. I'd be happy to, you know, work my schedule.
We do have four other cases that night, one of them is a variance argument, so it will be a very long night, if we do them all.
Yeah, because those two are going to take quite a while. Okay, why don't you give us some dates, if you would please, when the room would be available, and then send it around...
Sure.
To everybody, not Dean, because he won't need to come, but to the other...
Are both DeLuce cases going to be heard simultaneously?
Yes.
At the same time?
At the, at the same meeting, if there's an agreement.
Same meeting.
Yeah, they're both scheduled for October the 25th.
Okay, all right.
So you wouldn't need to be attend...
Yeah, special meeting would be, I think would be...
Need to attend a special meeting.
Are there any meetings through the week that are difficult for people?
How, how long?
Mondays are always out, because of the selectmen's meetings.
Right.
So Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursdays.
Mr. Mayor, Hilliard's going to be away.
How long am I going to be away? I'm going to be away from the Sunday, the 25th, is that correct?
No, Wednesday is the 25th.
I'm sorry?
Wednesday, the 25th.
Wednesday, the 25th?
No, Thursday's the 25th, and, no, Wednesday's the 25th.
All right, let me just take a look at this for a second, I can tell you, because I'm going to be, no, I can...
Wednesday's the 25th, it's right here for me.
Come on, come on.
What's that?
I'm going to be away from the 29th through the 2nd.
I think it'd be great if we could...
Okay.
Well, I don't know whether I could get Mr., the attorney of Sabbath, for the other side, to agree to one earlier, but I could try. So if we wanted to...
Well, he's going to have the same problem.
Right, well, he hasn't been heard yet.
Right, but we'll still only have four members.
I'm going to be away from the 19th to the 24th.
Because Dean's going to recuse himself, so we'll still only have four.
November.
If Jim can't make it.
October. Well, when will you think of doing it, in October?
No, no, I'm, I'm asking for your October dates that are difficult, 19th to the 24th.
My October, I'm, I'm wide open October, for the rest of, well, there isn't, yeah, I'm wide open for October on Wednesdays.
Except for the 25th.
Twenty, let me, yeah, okay, just...
Okay, look at it for a minute, the next meeting is scheduled for October the 25th, and that was when we were assuming you were going to be in California.
Right, I'm, I'm gone from the 22nd to the 27th.
Okay, 22nd to 27th.
So I'm available any Wednesday before that.
Okay.
And...
Well, doesn't, it could be, other than a Wednesday.
Right, it will be a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, I'll find what's, what's available, but that's why I was asking if people had difficulty...
Right, and then we can see who can make it.
You're going to have to publish it, right?
We'd have to publish it, and what we'd have to do on this case, the DeLuce case, is offer a complete rehearing, because you weren't for the, at the first one. So he could have the option of four-person Board or rehearing, if we can get five.
Now, is the case we're talking about Demouls?
No.
You didn't say Demouls, okay.
No.
Okay.
DeLuce.
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 Sandpit.
It's a Sandpit case.
Okay, I have a conflict with Demouls, okay.
But we, the problem was, we had one hearing...
No.
And Dean had recused himself, and Franco, you weren't here, and Franco had since resigned, so unless we have a rehearing of the case, he can't have five people.
Right, so we can give him the option of the 25th with four.
Right.
We have four.
Right. We, we assume, right?
Okay, what I will do...
But do we like that option of the 25th with four, and four other cases?
Well, I don't think we can force him to continue again, because he's under a cease and desist order, so...
We're offering, we're likely offering to move it earlier, right?
Right.
Which, again, the other attorney might not be.
Right.
The other attorney has booked for this date three months, three months ago, or two months ago.
But the other one could...
The other guy could stay on for the 25th, and we don't hear him together. Right, 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 we don't have to hear them together.
We don't have to hear them together.
All right, then, I will, I will construct a correspondence to Attorney Shealy, offering...
Well, not until we make sure we have five. We first have to make sure we have five people.
Well, what I was going to say is, I'll put something together and send it to you, and then we'll sit with it, and decide what we're going to do.
First, you have to give us dates.
Right.
And then we can decide how many we have, and then we can send something to Attorney Shealy.
Okay, I'll see what I can, for magic, I can create.
You anticipate the other gentleman being here for this?
Sorry, say that again, Al?
The gentleman who's not here, you anticipating him to be here?
Oh, John Burke?
John Burke, yeah.
Yeah, I think John said he could be here in October. Okay, well, that's the best we can do. Okay, did anybody have any comments on the minutes that Sheila sent around? Minutes of the August 30th, 2017, meeting?
Oh, I didn't have any.
I...
I sent them out, and Mr. Hedersted said, "Good job."
Good job.
All right, then, why don't you move?
I move that the minutes of the meeting on...
August 30th.
August 30th, 2017, conducted at 7:00 PM, be accepted as written.
Second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hilliard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Does anyone have any other business? Congratulations, Mr. Hilliard.
Thank you.
Would Mrs., would Mr. Hilliard be amenable to watching the tape of the first meeting you guys had?
That's another option, too.
I would.
Was it taped?
I think it was, but I would...
I, I don't remember.
I don't rem, I wasn't, I was sitting in the back, and I can't tell you.
Does gentlemen know?
No, Jack wouldn't, because it was a different fellow, but I think, I think it was...
Caleb, yeah, I don't, I don't remember if it got taped that night or not.
Did you get me the information on that case?
Absolutely, I'll find out if we do have a tape.
Okay.
Is it, is it, would it be improper also to refer, Jim, to the Cape Cod Chronicle article on that hearing, which I thought presented very matter-of-fact way?
That won't do it, that won't do it.
I mean, I meant in addition.
Yeah, you can look at it, sure, but that...
The guy made a lot of...
To, to sit on it, he'd still have to have heard the tape, so...
It was complicated, and he did a good job of presenting what we considered or heard.
But it still doesn't solve the issue, because we still won't have five on the 25th.
Of course not.
You would, wouldn't you? One, two, three.
So that was, that was our July meeting.
Oh, we can't come the 25th? Oh, we can't come the 25th. Oh.
Right.
Regardless, right.
All right, so we're back to a board of five. We have one alternate, Al, who's in the on-deck circle. If any of you know of anybody that can put the squeeze on to join us as an alternate, feel free.
I may.
Yeah, talk to people.
Let me, let me give it some thought.
Okay. I guess I don't have anything further.
I have one question.
Yes.
When we open the deliberation on each case, we always start in one position. Would it make sense to rotate that, to move it around?
It's okay by me.
I'm actually dying to hear what Kathy has to say, though, before I vote.
I couldn't even remember who she was, so...
You're watching beautifully, you know that? You really do. At your age, you do.
It's okay with me. I don't, I don't know, it's just...
It's the rosacea, Dean.
Gary, Gary used to start at the other end some nights.
Gary, well...
I just have never thought about it.
I'm sensitive to that point. He always started at the other end, and by the time he got to me, there was nothing more to ask or learn.
Okay, Shayla, mix the, mix the names up next. Shayla's in charge of this. Mix the names up.
Everybody put your keys right in front of Mr. Ryer.
Thank you.
Yeah, as long as I'm here, so just to be centrally located. Sure, we'll move everybody, or just move your own wherever you want to sit. I don't care.
Or you can just point.
I don't think we need to move around, but I think, you know...
I'm really going to remember that. No, we're going to go in order. I can't remember all this stuff.
Well, okay, but you could have the first person on each case. Jim could be a number one, and I could be one. Okay. Retract the suggestion.
I don't object to it, just, you've got to rotate around, because I will never keep track of who has spoken and who hasn't. Because sometimes, you know, people go back and forth and ask questions, especially, I use the example of 40B.
My wife's going to ask me how the meeting went, and I said, "There was somebody wanted to be rotated." That's all I know.
Well, better than roasted, right? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will move that. I'll second it.
Second, Mr. Donahue. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.